Okay, we'll call a Shakopee City Council meeting for April 15th, 2025 to order. If you could please take the roll.
Councilmember Delaney?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Councilmember Lara? And Mayor Lehman?
Here. Thank you, sir. Item number two, or item number three, actually, if you want to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here is a special presentation on the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, MVTA update. Councilor Whiting is our council-appointed liaison to MVTA. He's going to be joining in on a tag-team slideshow presentation with information about They may be joined by Mr. Luther White.
Yeah, Luther would be joining us, Luther, wouldn't he? All right, we've got our slideshow. I'm just jumping into this slideshow, so thank you for having us tonight. As you well know, we're members of the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority. Our next slide is going to introduce Luther, and Luther will be joining us. He's a little late. There was some traffic issues, so he did not take the bus.
I was about to say, he should have taken the bus.
He should have. We have MVTA Connect that could have taken him right here. But here's a good snapshot. If you want to take a look at this slide, it kind of details what MVTA is all about. I'm going to pull this closer. Always got to talk right into this mic. So we have 170 buses, 24 routes, 14 P and R.
Park and ride.
Park and ride stations, thank you, and two garages. Joy, you want to fill in a little more detail?
Yes, sure. And my name is Joya Stetson. I am the Community and Economic Development Director at MVTA. So my job is really about being able to work with your team, work with Michael, work really closely with him and Kyle, to understand what's happening in our communities so that we can be more proactive with the services that we're providing to you. So I'm grateful that you guys are such a good partner for us, and I have such a fun job to be able to go out and do all of the exciting pieces of this work. So like Jay said, we provide a few different types of services. So we have express services, which allow people to get, you know, to and from suburbs to the cities or St. Paul to be able to go to work. We also have our microtransit service, which has just been initiated, and that just started this year to be able to come to Prior Lake and Shakopee. So we were excited to be able to bring that here. And for those that have not leveraged the Connect so far, it's an app-based service, and it allows you to book on your phone up to three hours in advance, and it's only $3 per ride. So you can go anywhere within, like, the developed-out portions of Shakopee and Prior Lake within that zone. So it'll pick people up if they're in that from their home, right? So it's a curb-to-curb service. So it's really, really nice for people to get to work, for people to get to, you know, appointments, or even just to go see family and friends. So we're finding a lot of different purposes for that. We also provide local service. So some of you may remember that last year we did a little bit of a reroute. We were able to bring our route 499 over to the Shakopee High School and allow students to access internships. And that was, at that exact same time, we also brought over that same route to the Southwest Intermediate School so that we were able to help individuals be able to get to some workforce training that was being put on by your amazing chamber here in Shakopee. So like Jay said, we have a couple of bus garages, we have 14 park-and-rides and transit stations, and about 24 to 25 routes. I say 24 to 25 because we do have a seasonal route, which is our For Fun Route that's just begun, and.
Talk about that, that's Shakopee.
Yes, yep. So the For Fun Route allows you to get to a lot of different, interesting destinations. So I like to call it our destination route because it goes to a lot of fun places. So it'll go to Canterbury, Mystic Lake, Mall of America. It does stop at the Marshall Road Transit Station here in Shakopee, and then last year we added on the Eagan Outlet Mall as well. So, and Valley Fair will be coming to fruition when they open up in May. So that will be also added to the schedule. And we found that Valley Fair folks, it's not just visitors that are using it, it's also their workforce as well. So that's kind of a good addition.
Do you do any busing for the Renaissance?
Yeah, yep. So we do event services, too. And one of the great things about the event services is we're going to be sharing some flyers with your city team. We will be doing the concert series again this year. We just did AC/DC, which we had good ridership from Shakopee, so that's exciting. And we're going to be doing more of those concerts. We're going to be doing the Renaissance Festival, and we're going to be doing State Fair again, too. So I don't know if any of you have taken the bus to the State Fair, but it's a lot better than trying to deal with the parking situation out there, too. So I heard they're going to be charging, I think, more for the parking meters on the street now, too.
$25?
Yes.
Wow.
Yes. So we will definitely continue to provide those special services and work collaboratively with your team here at City Hall to make sure that your residents have that information at hand and can access those services.
By the way, thank you very much for the effort that you did with the high school and the internships. That idea actually came from a student who brought that up at one time. We are one of the sponsors of one of the academies, the Human Services Academy. And it's so refreshing to have an organization that looks at it and says, as opposed to, no, we don't do that, says, you know what, let's see if we can do this. And thank you so much. That was really, really worth the effort.
Mayor Lehman, you brought up the Renaissance Festival, and I want to even bring that out a little more. I think the bus service, and not only MVTA, really saved that whole venue for Shakopee. It wouldn't have worked, as you know, the county was having a lot of problems with the past current state until.
And parking, both.
Yeah. So the Minnesota Valley was integral in making that happen, among other people. I also want to mention the For Fun Bus is really not just Shakopee, but very related to Shakopee. And thank you for joining us. And there's also partnerships with Canterbury Park, too, that are coming up for some of the new concert series, too. So Luther made it. He did not take the bus.
Watch it out, Luther.
We're kind of right at this slide, just beginning of this slide. We can just pull that up, and I'll just pass it over to you.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. A little accident, unanticipated. All right. So let's talk about the routes obviously serve, obviously Shakopee. We have a number of services that we do that serve this community, and we have our express services, our 490 does extremely well in Minneapolis, goes U&amp;M. We're actually looking right now to add additional services there. One thing we've noticed is there's some time points, maybe in midday and evenings, that'd be beneficial for us to add for the 490 service. So stay tuned for us to talk about service expansion on that particular route. We have the 43, 495. We also have a For Fun Bus, which starts Thursday, starts next, starts in a couple days, that serves Valley Fair, as well as Canterbury. Excited about that. That takes us from our 25 to 26 routes. That's seasonal. We also have our local routes of 487 and 499. You guys may be aware, a couple of years ago, we actually reduced service on those bigger routes and expanded microtransit. It added effect some people's AD eligibility. So we're looking probably to add some additional services back there. One of the things we look at when in terms of service, frequency is reduced. Anything beyond a half an hour, a lot of times customers just don't see the viability of utilizing it. And we see, that's what we kind of see with the 4, with the 487 and 499. When it looks at overall picture, we're at ridership for 2024. So we're up about 10 and a half percent from 2023 to 2024. See on that upward trajectory. Express service is up almost 10%. Local service is down 2%, but that's primarily due to the fact that we reduced local service by 15%. Last year, we reallocated those, that save, those cost savings to our Connect service, which in the next slide, we'll kind of talk about the Connect growth. So overall, when you look at system ridership, where we're at currently today, this is actually March, we're a little higher than that. We're almost now about 50% of pre-pandemic levels, which you see, that's region-wide, as well as what you see in certain communities. Now, there are some cities and some communities that are back to pre-pandemic or a little bit above. That's mostly due to work-from-home policies. As you continue to see different pressures on employers, as well as state governments, returning individuals to work, you tend to see obviously an upward trend when it comes to individual utilizing the service. Year-to-date, our ridership is about 5%. Connect, now that is no, there is no shortage of people riding Connect. This actually is also, I think, we're up over 50%, I think, 50% increase now, but from 2023, we're up 44% from 23 to 24. Our average daily ridership is now, the rest is 434. We actually peaked over 500 rides now, with the addition of adding Shakopee and Prior Lake services. Our average wait time is still hovering around at 26 minutes. That is still, that is still consistent. One of the things that we, and that depends on geographically where the customer's booking the trip from. It's important to note, from an agency goal perspective, we like to have our service levels about 20 minutes, service wait times about 20 minutes for individuals. When we start turning this 20s, above 25 minutes, especially getting to 30 minutes, we normally have to make either some policy changes or try to add some additional vehicles. As you see right now, we're definitely trending that way. We don't want customers who utilize the app to have to obviously book the service, have to wait for 30 minutes to get service. Our new zones, as we talked about before, Shakopee, our ridership continues to double from the implementation of the service in this community. Connect expansion. So two bright spots there. I think I've talked about, obviously, the addition to Scott County, but our EJUST vehicles, if anyone's familiar with it, back in 2023, really short story, we were the first in the nation, those are electric buses, they were purpose-built electric buses, they're actually, it was the number-one-selling diesel bus in Turkey. They're actually manufactured in Turkey at the time. We were the first transit agency in the nation to put them in revenue service. They were an electric bus. We actually had it in 2023. We used it during the snowstorm, that great ice storm that we had. It handled extremely well. It was one of the first buses, electric bus, that we had demoed, that actually the battery life and with the durability during that month period, what they said it was going to do, it actually did. Did really well for us. We ended up working with EJUST. We took the bus, I was at the, took it to Capitol Hill, did some conferences related to obviously making sure they can get the federal waiver. They were able to get their federal FTA waiver, as well as they were getting away from the White House. They've actually also moved some production now into the United States. That's all pre, that's pre-tariff. Probably be moving some more now, but they were really excited about, they bought a battery plant in North Carolina, and now have a version two, a larger bus, that'll be coming to market next year. So we like to talk about, that's one of the great things about our agency, seeing some good technology and then moving forward. We have.
And that heavy bus and that low center of gravity kept it on that snow real well.
Oh, amazingly well for us. What we found was during that particular time, the only, we pulled all our vehicles off the road during that particular week, that particular day, and our maintenance manager just took out director. He just took that bus out to see how it handled. Handled like a dream. So had we had had to make service or put, if they were in production, had more of those vehicles at that particular time, we definitely would have kept those vehicles out during a Connect service, and probably none of our other vehicles would have been able to. And that's due to low center of gravity and battery. Apologies, trying to make some time. A little talk about the Connect demographics here. It's important to note where we're at is who we serve with this particular, the particular mode. So about 68% of our customers utilize Connect service to go to and from work. 47% of our customers say if they didn't have Connect, they'd use Uber and Lyft. But I always talk about this, that next bullet is the most important one. One of five of our Connect riders have an annual threshold income of less than $15,000. Now, we implemented this service back in 2019, ooh, it's been a long time now. During that particular time, we looked at the average Uber and Lyft trip on our servicers, and it wasn't in Shakopee and Prior Lake at the time. It was about $23, $20 each way for an average trip in suburban communities. A person making $15,000, having to go twice a day, relying on Uber and Lyft wouldn't be possible. When you look at our frequencies we have with some of our services, like the 487, 499, they're really unusable sometimes for people who need to get to work because of the, because of the time points at which you operate. Connect fills that void. 47% of our riders are individual color. When we first started this service, the first year, it was about 50% were women. Now you've seen they've taken over. So now 60% are women, 40% are men. So they'll probably keep going down as they come in there, but we'll try to get it back for the guys. One in 10 of our Connect riders have a disability or long-term health condition, and right now you see about 45%, excuse me, 35% of customers are between 35 and 54, because that's kind of the working, that's one of our working, the working age population. What we find is those individuals below 35, that 21 to 34-year-olds, a lot of times, they think those smaller buses are buses for people with disabilities, mobility. They don't see the Connect as a viable option for them as an on-demand service. So it's about the education component. I will say having those EJUST buses has really helped because it's something to communicate. They see it, they understand it. It's a different bus type, but the more communication spread, the word "Connect" is for everybody. Event service. We don't have our last concert, I think AC/DC, that was very well attended. They're still very popular. But in 20, from 2023 to 2024, we were up 27% for our special event service. That was primarily driven by Taylor Swift. She was quite popular. She is quite, quite popular. The Swifties definitely utilized our service. We also have the Minnesota United Games, the Minnesota Viking Games, Gophers, and we did a couple of community events historically, as well as about 10% increase in Valley Fair. Partnerships. Oh, this is where it gets a little, this is where it gets a little bit.
Heavy Shakopee.
Yeah, but also, too, the wording gets a little lighter, so it's going to change minds, but I got it. So I will say Joya especially and her team have been doing an exceptional job, obviously, of coming out and doing a lot of community outreach at Shakopee. Prior to having Joya in the team, we've always focused our service and our time, but we had the resource to kind of come on and spend a lot of time in the communities. And I think this kind of shows. I get a lot of updates, primarily a lot of updates from Joya, very spirited updates, and a lot of them related, always related to Shakopee. So I would just highlight her for her work right now and kind of communicate that, and please feel free to, if I've missed anything, represent, to clarify. So we have Canterbury Park. We're still working, obviously, for our service concept for them. As we know, we will be providing some service to the amphitheater. We're working on our circulator design. We do currently, I just approved, we have four trolleys that have been, that have been ordered. We're retrofitting four of our 40-foot gill buses to trial, given a trolley package. They look, the trolley on the outside, and a couple of them will have to have the trolley interior as well. We'll utilize them to run that circulator, as well as some other local services around Prior Lake and Shakopee. So stay tuned for that. We think it kind of fits the characteristic of what we want to see for, I've always wanted, it's something we have back east in some of our beach communities, in some of our resort communities. We have that trolley. It's a different vehicle type. It kind of lets customers know it's different than a bus, but it's still a bus. Maybe they'll give it a try. So look, we should have those, should be on line, we should have those in the next couple of months, they'll be here. And they'll be using it to serve the amphitheater when it does open. Valley Fair provided some, a few months ago, was it months ago now at this point? Feels like, feels a little longer than that. But historic flooding, we were a stand-up service and provide some service when the park went flooded, provided service to them in pretty much a day's times. From the fastest turnover ever able to do as far as I was sending that much service. They need as long as they, they didn't need us as long as they anticipated, but it was good to be able to obviously be able to provide that service to them during their time of need and when flooding happens. If there are any issues like that, please reach out, and we'll definitely try our best to make sure we can accommodate and provide services. Shakopee High School, a lot of outreach has been done, been done to Shakopee High School. It's very interesting to understand that during the internship program that they have, a lot of their internships were on the 499 route, but the 499 didn't stop at the high school. So that's that, that's that missing link that we have here. So that was recognized by Joya and her team. We've kind of remedied that. We've also been doing some really, really good outreach, making them understand what's available to them, and obviously now they have Connect as well, too, that'll provide some assistance.
Just want to jump in on that a little bit. We have seen over 60% increase on the 499 route. So that's been, I think, really good for us to see as an organization, and hopefully you guys are proud of that, too.
I know, that's amazing. It's that missing link, just having that conversation. And that's what you find so many times. We have the service footprint, but people don't always know where it goes or what options it has. And when you finally educate, sometimes it goes if it's a need, but when it does, it's a great synergy. Southwest Metro Intermediate School, we added Dean Lake's Education Center to the 499, so they can access the career lift initiative, which is really important. And we work with the Dr. Strickler International Teachers to connect them to transportation options.
Now, one other outreach, Councilmember Delaney and Joya just did in Shakopee, it was BHS. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. Yes. So we were able to go to Benedictine Senior Living, and we gave a presentation to the council. So a colleague and I were able to talk a little bit about the work that we do at MVTA, the services that are available, and it was amazing to see the response that we were able to get from the community. So we had hands shooting up, that people really wanted to see more trainings offered. And since that, Councilmember Delaney and I were able to schedule two subsequent trainings. So we now have in the next three to four weeks, two trainings coming up. One of them will be presentation style, and then we have some experiential learning, where we're going to get people on the bus and show them hands-on how to utilize service to build that comfort.
A little bit about the 2024 rider survey. Important to note that our service is a little bit different now. Our last survey was done in 2019, and what you looked at, back in 2019, about 95% of our customers did the survey, said you guys would go to work. Actually today, about 60% of our respondents say now that your trip purpose primarily goes to go to work. And that's primarily due to the various different new service types we have serving our suburban communities, like our Connect service. 83% of our residents drove to their first, first location in 2019, because primarily we're a parking lot, a parking ride, excuse me. We have a couple of park rides here, South Bridge, Eagle Creek, in Scott County, as well as Savage, the Borders. Now, because we have more, obviously have more door-to-door service, point-to-point service, what we see now, that's down to 54% more for suburban and local. Ridership has been approved and started pandemic, but we're not, as I talked about before, we're not where we were pre-pandemic, but we're moving there. We used to have one typical rider. That rider was a rider who got on the bus at one of our parking rides and used the service to go downtown for, for our express service to go downtown from Minneapolis to work. That's simply not what we see today. Our local service went from, prior to the pandemic, 25%, now accounts for 40% of our post-pandemic ridership. And it's something that I think I talked about, we talked about, we recognized prior to the pandemic. I always say, the pandemic was a horrible thing to happen, but one thing, it also kind of wiped away what we've been saying. We've seen this, there's been, always been an increase of affordable housing and senior living in our communities, as well as that changing footprint of individuals moving from the core to the suburban, suburban, suburban communities. But the transit wasn't there to provide access to them. When the pandemic happened and everyone stopped going downtown on express, we were able to look at that and assess where people needed to go to get around the communities. We were able to pool that funding, because it wasn't being utilized, for express service and rededicate that and allocate, allocate that, excuse me, to our local service. Case in point, we have Connect and expanded local suburban service. But I've always said, if express service returned to 2019 levels, level ridership, we would have to probably cut all of our Connect service. We would not be able to do both. We cannot operate in this new model of servicing mode and still go back to the old model of providing that level of express service. We don't, because we don't have yet, don't have an influence of new funding.
I mentioned that the last time we talked about MVTA. There's only so much money in the pot. It's either it's going to go to the express, or it's going to go toward the Connect service. It can't, can't do both. Can do both, but to certain limits.
And we'll talk a little bit about some of this. I talked about the 490 all-day service that we're looking at right now. Obviously, we talked about the Connect weekend services there. We have the 495V service to hourly to the airport. We're trying to, our 495 was always been a really strong service for us. That serves Amazon, obviously paid for, that branch paid for by Amazon, also Mystic Lake. But when we spanned the airport, we started to see a dip in ridership. So we're looking to see what we can do as far as reinvigorate that particular route. We think it might be something to do with the airport, but we're looking to see maybe hourly or maybe moving that airport, that airport connection off the 495 and make that route be let it used to, how it used to operate. Also, too, we're also exploring trans options for Canterbury. Just talked about. Some capital project initiatives. We have, Marshall Road renovations are happening, so it's going to accommodate a new anchor tenant. So we're going to be obviously changing our footprint as far as how we operate at Marshall Road. Just a reduction in parking, but it also helps us because we'll have, obviously, some more individuals traveling from that particular site. Eagle Creek, we're currently, right now in South Bridge, we're currently doing some enhancements. Eagle Creek, we're doing, I just proved the invoice, some stamped concrete out there. That was really in some rough shape. So our goal is to get that, to get that, get that parking ride, so utilize it again and also get it back up to our standards. Last but not least, we did have a build grant in for a Scott County mobility station and garage. Currently, we weren't successful in getting that, in getting that particular grant award, but one of the top priorities, the agency is trying to secure some land in Scott County, about 10 to 15 acres, that we can build a garage and have a mobility hub. That's our goal. We'll continue to ask for, look for some grant opportunities, but we are working with some, with a real estate, with a real estate agent now, as well as some TOD, some TOD individuals, to help us assess where the possibility may be for us to find that land and obviously do some construction in the future. Last but not least, I want to talk about legislatively. It's important to note that Shakopee, of my seven cities, Shakopee is one of my least-funded cities. We put quite a number of service in Shakopee, but that's because we're primarily funded by Invest. Your Invest for Shakopee is a snapshot of what the community looked like in 2001. So our budget is an aggregate of, say, 30, 35 million, but it's made up of seven cities. Burnsville and Eagan during that in 2001, they were pretty much built out. So when it went from property tax to Invest, we get a larger percentage for those two communities. Also, when it comes to Apple Valley as well, too, they weren't, they were a little bit more built out. When you look at Shakopee, especially what you've seen a few years ago, one of the fastest-growing cities, not only in the state, but in the country, there was no new additional, no additional, new additional funding in order to provide additional services here. It's always been through reallocation. Taken from one place and obviously added to another. We have been getting some interim, fast forward to the sales tax for the region. Now, that was Metro Transit, I think, the whole region had some of those same, some chain challenges, and there was a 0.75% sales tax was passed in 2023. Unfortunately, right now, Minnesota Valley still receives an interim policy, about 2.8% of that, about $10 million. Of that $10 million, we had to take out $5 million for some capital, as directed by, directed by, directed by the state in the legislation. Our goal is, in order to expand service, we dedicate the funding. That's why I'm spending a lot of time with the capital now. We do have a bill in right now that's being carried, that's being carried by Representative Hewitt, will be carried by Representative Hewitt, to provide 6% of the sales tax that will go to Minnesota Valley, as well as University of Minnesota, who doesn't currently have, doesn't receive any sales tax funding. And you look at that from standpoint, that would go from the 10 million, 10 to 12 million that we're receiving now, to about 23 million that we're looking at as a floor. That would allow us to expand service, provide that all-day 490 service. It would allow us to get back to running hourly, half-hour frequencies on our local services here on the 497, 49. It would also allow us to expand our Connect service to cover all of Shakopee, as well as Prior Lake, and actually add weekend service as well, too, as well as a whole host of other things. That's our number-one priority right now. We do understand, because we're putting it at this particular time, it's an education component to it. We expect to get some traction out in 2026, but the support and evacuation is really, really important, because that's the only way we're going to see moving forward in the future, to expand service here in Shakopee and our suburban And with that, any questions?
Questions of council? Couple of questions. Luther, the 450 annual, is that for all the providers? It's split up to different providers?
You said the 450?
Yeah, you've got, there's.
Oh, yeah. The 450 million, right now, it's, that's the amount of sales tax, the new revenue pot that comes to the region.
Right.
Primarily goes to the council. 83% of it goes to the council, which 5% of that they delegate to TAB, and they have the responsibility to provide that to all the providers.
Right.
Of which they provide, all four of us, about a little bit under 4%, a little bit over 4% of that funding.
Yeah. So Metro Transit, which they own, gets a piece of that 450, which is kind of a conflict, I see, but.
Yeah. And that's one of the things we had a conversation with the council yesterday. They have some really great plans. One of the things is to expand service by 35% in the region. Unfortunately, we're not encapsulated in that plan because we don't have the funding, and they haven't asked. We, I said the same, we'd love to expand our services by 35% in our suburban communities. We'd like that funding as well, too. And that's the conversation that has to happen in order us to do those.
And the other, it's not a question, it's basically a comment, but I like busing better than rail. And the reason I like it is because when, when workforce changes, you know, you might have some big business with lots of employees build somewhere. It's a lot easier for the transit providers to look at their routes and just change a route, and it doesn't really take much effort or much money to do that. So it's very flexible. They can adapt, they can adjust. It's not reliant on a long time of build-out and a whole lot of capital, so.
Mr. Mayor, you saw MVTA adapt with COVID.
Yep, absolutely.
And made adjustments and had to, but we kept ridership where we needed it, the services where we needed it.
Yep. Go ahead.
No question, just a comment. Just thank you so much for all the partnership, all the work. You guys are doing the outreach with, you know, the schools in particular. That's amazing, because a lot of our kids want to do stuff, but, you know, for whatever reason, maybe don't have a car. And it's like, how do I do this? And it's a worry in the back of their head, but you coming in and like, no, we got you. We'll help you get to your destination. And it's a worry in the back of their head, but you coming in and like, no, we got you, we'll help you get to your destination. So thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Well, if we could think broader down the road, you know, I'm thinking, is it St. Benedictine?
Which one they.
The one that you're just, are going to. Imagine, you know, down the road where you have these able-bodied assisted living folks in multiple locations being, being able to have a service, right?
I think Councilmember Delaney got a lot of their seniors downloading our apps, so I appreciate that.
That's good.
The point I'm making is that's not the only location. It's not the only location.
No, not the only one.
It's a good start. You're going to probably learn a lot in that process, both sides. And I, you know, just thinking long-term, what a service that could be for a lot of the elderly.
The seniors, yeah. I mean, because when you get a little older, sometimes you have to give up your transportation and that independence is still desired. So this microtransit does help with that, and I just much appreciate it.
It's a different, it's a mid-service for us. We wanted to be different than oxygen transit or smart lane, but this service has been above three hours in a day, not a day before. I work a lot with building services prior to coming out to Minnesota. And, you know, a lot of the services. And if you don't know what you're going to do the next day, you put that trip in just then, you know, you have. Because if you're a son, you're daughters, what happens? You need, and if you're lucky, you need to be there. So a lot of times, a lot of cancellation, a lot of replanting. But I always have to talk about, none of us really know, I know I'm going to work tomorrow, but I said that, I don't have my whole day planned. But we do expect that for individuals sometimes used for other service types. It's three hours, if not up to 14 minutes before you leave the service. That way it gives that true local flexibility. Things happen, emergencies happen, and that's how we sell our cancelers already. And if this means we'll see different markets because it does, it does for the best.
Mayor, thank you for bringing this up, too, because I think for the council, for staff, for community members, if there are situations or organizations that you would like to see us reaching out to, please let us know. I'm happy to go out, talk to them, have conversations and be able to provide training. MVTA never charges for our training services. We think that, you know, as a public service, it's our obligation to ensure that people have access. And so that's something that's really important to us as well. So we're just an email away, and Jay is always able to send a note to us, too.
Yep. And just the last question. You didn't say it, but the website, if somebody wanted to ride, would be? MVTA. Dot com?
And the app is Ride MVTA.
Ride MVTA dot com, right?
It's actually, it's actually an app.
Okay, okay, so you download the app.
Yes.
Got it, got it. And then payment. What's the payment options for riders?
Cash, you can utilize your go-to card, cash and go-to card.
Credit card on the app, but can you do a credit card on the bus?
Not yet.
Okay. Can you do? Okay, or you do the cash on the bus? Okay, very good. Mr. Lara?
Can you book the trip and then pay cash on the bus?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
You can walk up to a bus, too, and book the trip. You can actually walk up to it and actually talk to the driver, too. Our drivers sometimes stay at, well, there are different parking rides our drivers sit. Customers able to walk up and ask for a trip, the driver will put the trip in and take the customer and click cash right there or the go-to card as well, too. A lot of people don't know that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Again, sorry, my apologies.
All right, item number five, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, members of council, we have a couple of changes.
Okay.
First of all, we will be pulling 6S, which is the social district. You will be seeing that in the future. And 10C has a new resolution in front of you, which has been properly posted prior to this meeting. And it reflects the commitment to bore the sewer line under the hill to protect some of the natural resources, which we had sent out an email earlier to you about.
Any other changes?
No, sir.
So 6S has been removed from the agenda, and 10C has an updated resolution that we all should have in front of us. I have mine. Okay. Any changes from council? Mr. Lara?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
Sir, a second? Mr. Delaney seconds the motion. Discussion on the motion? 10C, none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number six, would be our consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda?
No other changes, sir.
Council? Mr. Councilor Contreras?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. As modified.
Second.
Modified, seconded by Councilor Whiting. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Reynolds will read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for Tuesday, April 15th of 2025. 6A awards a contract for the 2025-2027 Emerald Ash Borer Treatment Project. 6B is an Arbor Day proclamation. 6C awards a contract for the 2025 Batuminous Pavement Rehabilitation Projects and accepts a proposal from StanTech for construction services. 6D awards a contract for the 2025 SCADA Systems Expansion Project. 6E awards a contract for the 2025 Batuminous Pavement Rejuvenation Project. 6F awards a contract for the 2025 to 2027 Native Vegetation Management Project. 6G is a cardio equipment lease for 2025 through 2029. 6H is the 2025 Trail Seal Coating Project. 6I is approval of the 2025 concession agreements. 6J approves on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for Trackside Hospitality LLC, doing business as Boardwalk Kitchen and Bar in Canterbury. 6K approves a special event permit and a temporary liquor license for the Shakopee Chamber and Visitors Bureau. 6L approves the city council meeting minutes for April 1st of 2025. 6M approves joint powers agreement between the City of Shakopee, the SMSC, and SPU for construction of public utilities to serve the proposed healing center. 6N accepts a proposal from TKDA for engineering services for the L16 dual force main improvements. 6O awards contracts, awards contracts for the Kalarney Hills and West End Dog Park. 6P approves agreements with the Metropolitan Council to participate in the 2025 Citizen Assistant Monitoring Program for Water Quality Sampling. 6Q is a declaration of surplus IT property. 6R is a declaration of surplus fire department property. 6D is a change order for the Jackson Commons with Hoffman McNamara. 6U is a purchase of playground equipment from Compton under Omnia Partners contract. And 6V is the Topa Field Baseball Improvements Left Field Patio Project.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We do have a motion, and we do have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Takes us to item number seven, public comment. If you're here for an item that is not on our agenda and you'd like to address council, now would be the time to come forward. So if you're here for an item that is not on our agenda and you'd like to address council. Last call. Seeing none. Item number eight, business removed from the consent agenda. The item that was removed was deleted from the agenda. Item number nine, public hearings, general business, number 10A. Capitol and AWCA accreditation update. Parking director. Ms. McNutt?
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Mr. Egan? Floor is all yours.
All right. Kelsey and I, I'd like to give you a little update on the accreditation processes, both of ours, the APWA and then the CAPRA, working on them separately. But I will say, this is more of a city. I think each department has contributed greatly and been a great partner, looking up all of our policies and procedures to this point. So we want to thank them. Quick update. So why do we want to go for this accreditation? On this slide here, it gives you some of the reasons why we do want to be proactive. Our day-to-day activities, being consistent. There are some other benefits for onboarding, recruitment, and succession planning. Accomplishment. Kind of verifies that the city is not only well-run, but also aligned with national best practices. If we get accredited, we got a little ways to go. We'll be the only Minnesota city that has both of them. So it's kind of some lofty goals, but we're going for it.
I'm sorry, you said the both of them?
The only city that would have both.
CAPRA and the.
Yes, correct.
And we will be accredited.
Yes. And then efficiencies. I think it was last fall, some of you on the council asked about, you know, are we being efficient? I mean, this is kind of a piece of that, having all our policies and procedures in place. I mentioned the citywide collaboration. Again, every department has helped, started, I don't know, we both started about a year ago, roughly, set up meetings, and everybody's been very supportive. So again, thank you. A little bit of background on the APWA, the American Public Works Association. Accreditation is a program that recognizes public works agencies for implementing best management practices and demonstrating compliance with industry standards. It is designed to foster continuous improvement, efficiency, and excellent in public works operations. This process involves a thorough review of policies, procedures, and documentation to ensure alignment with the best management practices. Some of the key points, the accreditation is voluntary. It's a voluntary program that provides recognition and credibility to the public works agencies. Accreditation builds trust among residents, city council, and staff. That's one of the biggest reasons. We can think we're doing things right, but when we put up our policies and procedures against some of these standards. The good thing is, I know we've had a lot that we've had, that we've worked under for many years, have worked great, but we just want to make sure that we keep current with these changing times. Another one, it requires a comprehensive review of all the policies, procedures, and standards, and operating guidelines, the SOPs. The process enhances operational efficiency, staff training, and overall service delivery. The accreditation must be reviewed every four years and maintain compliance and demonstrate continued improvements. That's another reason we want to do this is just to keep current with everything. You know, how times change and things change. We want to make sure we're moving up with all those. Agencies benefit from peer review, feedback, networking, and adopting national best practices. We have a little slide here on kind of our journey. These are kind of the main four steps here. Our little Shakopee truck there is showing our progress. The self-evaluation process is the most lengthy. There's, in our booklet, there's like 40 chapters, but we only do the ones that apply to us. Example would be water. We don't have water, so we don't have to do that chapter. So we are actually doing 17 chapters. And we're pretty much done with that, and we just met last week with our peer review group. That's the yellow there. So we're very close to that.
Your peer group, is that other cities or other accredited groups?
Right now, we have an internal one with city employees, but the accreditation team, that'd be the national team, will take a look at it if you request it. So we may do that. And then the third one there, that would be when the APWA national team would come here and review all of our documents. And then the final one, hopefully, in roughly a year from now, they'll be giving us our accreditation. This is a rough, some cities have done it in one to two years. They figure three years is what they give you. So in August of '24 is when we applied and we started our self-assessment. So we have it as year two. It's going to be close right at year two when our peer review will be done. And then later this year, we'll be, we brought a couple of policies already to this board, but there'll be more coming. We'd like to kind of get all of our policies that we want to bring to you and maybe do them in a little larger group. Hopefully, we don't have too many. We do know a few. And then the final, like I said, it's the in-person review from the APWA accreditation team. So with that, do you have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Egan, before we go on to the next step of this, let's cover this part. Is there any questions on this part?
I think they're similar, so we.
I will just say, we've got a great public works department. All, the whole team is outstanding, in my view. But I know the rules and the SOP, standard operating procedures and stuff like that change over time, and it's never a bad thing to review all of that and insert where it best fits the organization, so.
Only comment I will make is, you think you're going to be done at this time period, but as you mentioned, this is evolving. It's going to change, and more constructions need to be updated, corrective actions, you know, need to be taken care of, things like that. All this documentation and processes is continual.
It's almost like other certifications. Every four years, you have to renew, so it's an ongoing.
It's definitely a good process, so.
Yeah.
No. Example would be, we wanted to be 100% done with our peer review like right now, and I'd say we're 85% done, maybe 90, so. But we want to keep the process going, so we're not going to hold up anything.
The other question I had was, is this for the leadership going through this or is this all the employees?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is this leadership doing this or all employees?
It's various, yeah. Like our review team, our internal review team right now, it's just staff members that we've pulled on.
But in the end, this is going to be the whole encompassing process.
And that comes, that comes from your leadership down to the.
It's everybody, yeah, really.
Okay. Mr. Reynolds?
I was just going to say, you know, as we go through day-to-day operations, we often see things, it's like, yeah, we should go back and take a look at this. And we never have the opportunity to do it because we don't make that time because we're just focused on doing the day-to-day operations. The beauty of both this accreditations, these accreditations are, is that it forces us to take a step back, look at what we're doing, making sure that it's the most efficient thing we can do, making sure that we're doing the best practices we possibly can. And, you know, that's, that's, that is probably the greatest benefit we're going to get out of this. And, you know, I know we've said it, but we will be the only city in the state of Minnesota that has both of these accreditations. And that is because of all of the employees in the city. Quite literally, finance has a chapter, HR has a chapter. You know, there are chapters that, and so we've had employees from the whole of the city have been participating in this and gladly, because we want to get better and we want to make sure that we're good stewards of our property and our tax dollars. So I'm excited about this. I've been a cheerleader from the very beginning. I think it's a very important thing that we're doing, and it's forcing us to get better, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Not to say that we're doing things that we shouldn't be doing, and I don't mean that from a right and wrong perspective.
Sure, yeah.
I mean it from a service perspective. Does it point out, you know, anywhere in the process, maybe it's under efficiencies or standard procedures, or maybe there's things we're doing that we shouldn't be doing? Or maybe there's things that we're not doing that we should be doing.
Oh, there's certainly some things that we probably should be doing and some policies that we need to have in place that we don't currently have. And, you know, that's. And, you know, that's, that's part of the process. And we're going to get there and ensure that we get all this completed, and, you know, I'm exceptionally excited about it.
Mr. Whiting?
It seems familiar to me, because I'm coming from an ISO 9000 company that has documented processes and detailed policies and procedures, work instructions and standards. And I would assume ASA for automotive is something similar to that. You have the processes. So when someone says, well, how do you, how do you do this? Well, you have a process. If that, that might change. Maybe you find a better process, or it's completely outdated, you change the process or the work instruction. And part of this is, you're going to review these on a time-period basis, each of them.
Well, what they're doing is, they're taking information nationally, and they're compiling it, just like the Tech Connect does in the automotive world, and everybody puts that feedback in. So example, you can put in car make and model with this code, and you can get the fix 9,000 times was this, and the second likely fix 4,000 times was this, and this was gathered throughout the whole country. And it's, now that information is now available to you, and I'm sure they're doing kind of the same.
I wish city problems were codes like that.
No, no, they're not looking at specifics, they're looking at the general standard stuff.
Yeah, I get it.
And it's requiring us to be accountable, you know? We need to make sure that, like I said before, we're doing what we need to be doing with the property and the tax dollars that the residents have given us in the city. And we certainly can look and say, yes, we have reviewed this stuff. We have made sure that we, we've, are doing the best practices. And I fully expect we'll be changing some things. I hope so. You know, that's, that's the whole point.
Another area, I know last year sometime, this body also talked about succession planning. Couple things about that is, we will have like a formal policy. But another thing, we have an employee that's been there 40 years, and has been specialized in a few areas, and is really good at it. Well, a lot of it up here, a lot of it's up here, so we'll have a lot of our just internal processes, like used to be closing down the pool. I remember somebody saying, I don't know, I just closed this valve down, because that's what we, the old guy told me to do. So now we'll have like a formal, you know, you do this and that, so you don't freeze the water line.
Right.
Yep. And one more comment, I mean, the easy way out would be just to not do this, but we're not looking for that, so.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
I think we got some more.
Yes. Kelsey's up next.
Yep. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm here to give you a little bit, a little update on the CAPRA accreditation. CAPRA stands for the Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies through the National Park and Recreation Association. Lot of words there. This will help ensure that we are operating and continue to operate under the industry's best practices. Like Bill and Mr. Reynolds have already said, it's going to force us to continuously evaluate the programs, services, and facilities that we're running to make sure that we're staying on top of trends and meeting these best practices. So we have a little blue car instead of a red pickup truck, but this is kind of where we are with our journey. Similar to the APWA, but a little different. We submitted our preliminary application in September of last year. And with that, our staff, myself and a few others, went through just an online training to get a little bit more familiar with the process. And now we are in our self-assessment with a report, which, similar to the APWA, is the most lengthy part of the process. Once we submit that, which our goal is to do that by the end of this year, we will have our initial evaluation, and then our onsite visit where the CAPRA team will come out and tour our facilities, observe our programs, and verify that all the evidence of compliance that we have submitted is actually true. So that will happen the summer of 2026. And then, unlike APWA, we have to defend our accreditation at a hearing at the national conference, which will be September of 2026. So that is when we will get our accreditation awarded, hopefully. So CAPRA, right now, consists of 10 different chapters, a state that, because right now, in those 10 chapters, there's 154 standards, and we renew every five years. They are currently in the process of streamlining this a little bit. So when we renew in five years, there's going to be only 68 standards, I believe. And what we are noticing is that there's a lot of standards where there's some duplication. So I believe the goal is to, you know, where we have that duplication, they're going to streamline it into one standard. But this is kind of where we are. So the blue represents everything we've completed, and the red where we still need to complete the self-assessment. And then there, right now, there are 36, yes, 36 fundamental standards, which means you have to meet those in order to receive your accreditation. And then the rest, they call non-fundamental standards. In order to receive our accreditation, we need to meet at least 90% of those. And then moving forward, every five years, when we are going through the reaccreditation process, we will need to hit a 95% rate in order to renew our accreditation. One key change that we made this year, when we brought on our new community outreach coordinator, one of the major job duties, and that was to be our accreditation manager. So Rachel will be continuously monitoring this as, once we get our accreditation, and then helping us towards reaccreditation moving, moving forward. So kind of our next steps, so these are our biggest things that we need to develop right now. Our recreation program plan, I would say that we do a lot of this, but to Bill's point, it's a lot up here in our heads, and we need to put it down on paper. Create our maintenance and operations management standards. Again, we have a lot of it up here, living in people's heads, but really getting it down on paper, so that everyone's aware of what's going on, when it happens. We also need to develop a comprehensive revenue policy, so essentially looking at the different programs and services that we offer, and determining what cost recovery percentage we want to be at, or what the council directs us to be at. And then lastly, we are looking at, as come our larger priorities for CAPRA, creating a donated improvements to public facilities policy. This is one where I really feel like we're going to achieve a lot of efficiency. Right now, these are just as they come in, we're talking through them, meeting as staff, bringing to council as needed. This will create a more streamlined and efficient process for that. And with that, I will stand for questions.
Questions?
I just wanted to say, with these two accreditations, I wanted to, I mean, it just clearly shows that our city staff are dedicated to making our city the best it can be, and it shows initiative. And, I mean, kudos to them. I mean, clearly, this is, this is, they don't make it easy for a reason, and it takes dedication, and it just shows to the rest of Minnesota, other cities in the metro, that we want to be better, and we want to do things more efficiently, and this helps us get there.
I just want to add to that. I'm very proud of you guys, because like Mr. Egan said, the easy way was just like, nah, we'll pass. But it's not just right now doing all the work, because all the work will be done, we'll get it. The hard part is maintaining it. So it's like, you guys are doing it, all the teams are working behind you guys, you guys are doing it. So just, you know, it's not going to stop at, oh, we got the accreditation. It's like, here we go, now five years, we got to work and keep it up, so best of luck, guys, but we will get it, yeah.
Mr. Whiting?
No, good point. It kind of echoes the, what we're getting at is the continuous improvement, but the sustainability is going to be the hard part. But it's kind of built into the process, so at least that will be continually improving. So, good for you.
Same here, just kind of echoing the same thing. I know it's a lot of time put into this, but I know it'll pay off on you, and thank you for the hard work putting into it.
Everybody.
And I'll just point out, once again, that we have a great park and recreation department already, so. The benefit that this company, agency, whatever it is, for both your departments, they get to gather the best of the best information from us and utilize it for others, okay? So when they capture all that greatness that we offer their programs, we'll make sure that we charge them adequately for that.
How to drain the pool.
I'm just saying, we do have a lot of great things going on, and our park and rec department is great, just as our public works is too. So I'm sure that this accredit, accredit, accreditation...
Accreditation.
Is going to gain, because that's what they do. They gain insight from everybody nationally, and try to decipher best practices and stuff. And they're going to get a lot of good information from us already, so. And we're going to get some from them too, so.
On behalf of all staff, we sincerely appreciate your efforts, your support in this effort. It's something that the whole city will, can be proud of once we're done.
Awesome.
Thank you both for your presentation. Any questions for us?
Put a little pressure on us.
Just done. Hope that helped.
Thank you again. Item 10B, preliminary plat of Richland Court.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the preliminary plat for Richland Court. So Stonebridge Engineering, on behalf of Matt Legozas, South Oak Realty, Inc., the property owner, have made an application for a preliminary plat of Richland Court. The subject property is located north of County Highway 78 and east of Town Line Avenue, County Road 79. The applicant has proposed a plat that would consist of eight single-family residential lots and 4.38 acres, and two outlots, that would be a storm pond and a wetland. This is a change from their previous plat, which showed 10 lots with a smaller stormwater pond and public easement. So this went through two planning commission meetings. They did submit a new application after the first meeting, reducing the number of homes from 10 to eight. So the net acreage will be 2.23 acres with a density of 3.5 units an acre. So this is the plat. You can see here the two outlots on the end. This is an existing wetland, and this will be their new stormwater pond over here. So this is the actual area where homes will be constructed. These are the two outlots. So significant time has been spent with the design of the access to Town Line Avenue to ensure compliance with Scott County's design standards. This access will be a right-in, right-only, with a bypass lane and a pork chop island, and a curb median between the north and southbound traffic. So basically, you can see that here, so only a right-in and a right-out, that was a requirement from Scott County. And then here's a larger-scale plan, so you can see they'll have both a new bypass lane and a turn lane here into the project. So pretty substantial amount of improvements out on the county road. So you see from the grading plan here, this is the wetland that will be over here, and this is the new stormwater basin that will drain off into an adjacent pond. And then this area does have sanitary sewer, so here's your sanitary sewer plan, and a water main plan. There is a Shakopee Public Utilities water main in the back here. And again, stormwater management and landscape plan we have as part of the project review. And at the planning commission, there was agreement to move some of the landscaping that's at the entrance here, behind some of these lots, whenever there's an existing house up against them, they would plant additional landscaping across the back, and the developer has agreed to that. So the property's been zoned R1B since 2006, and received final plat approval for a six-lot subdivision. They did not move forward with that at the time, and I believe the owner passed away. Staff has determined that the approval occurred prior to 2030 in the 2040 comprehensive plans that are more specific in establishing densities. This plat is complying with the R1B zoning and the 2040 comprehensive plan, and the design performance standards, which require a density of three to five units per acre. So we ask to approve resolution R 2025-003, approving the preliminary plat of Richland Court.
Questions of staff? Mr. Lara?
Mr. Kerski, can you help me understand why Scott County is wanting a right-in, right-out for eight homes, but I can take a right or a left on Barrington Drive, and there's 20-plus homes?
I will leave that answer to the city engineer.
Thank you, mayor and council. It comes down to their access spacing requirements along their county highways. They look at corridors as a whole, so looking at existing accesses and how there's space to their major access locations. While there are other accesses adjacent to the subdivision to the north that currently don't meet the access spacing requirements, those were originally constructed as full-access locations, and the county wouldn't be modifying those accesses without a development, essentially. So they will leave those the way they are. But as new subdivision and permits come in that the county reviews, that's where their authority comes in for jurisdiction on their county highways. So if this subdivision does not meet their access spacing requirements, they would require it to be restricted to comply with that, and that would be a developer expense. The city did have conversations with the county through reviewing this application to look at alternative options to provide different access control, given that it was an eight-lot subdivision. However, the county viewed that, the fact that they're constructing a roundabout to the south, that somewhere at this location, that it provides alternate access and some ways to navigate the neighborhood. If you're coming from the north, you're able to use the roundabout to the south and come back and enter the neighborhood, and then you're able to leave this neighborhood and go to the north, where they viewed the majority of traffic would go. So we did have conversations, but ultimately, it's the county's decision.
Just having flashbacks to other projects.
Whiting?
Thank you. There's, on this map, and I'm on the colored map here, there's some shapes, parcels around there, and I assume they're not under ownership of this current development, but is this going to leave some unusable parcels here, or is this on a hill where these are unusable?
Like back here.
Yeah, this, behind the space here, and then this triangle space up on Town Line.
So, excuse me, mayor and council, so the property around here is either owned by single-family homes, or it's common space for the association, not associated with this project. This parcel was part of one of those associations at one time, and was sold off to pay for their sewer connection, some of the fees. So the then-developer bought it and then didn't develop it, and this was now purchased from that family by the current developer.
This is what's left. One other question, didn't we talk about Hillwood Drive? Didn't we improve the sewer connections in there, or did that go through without connections on Hillwood?
Mayor and council, I believe that is sewered rural residential. The city engineer can correct me on that.
It's up by Stonebridge. You're talking about Route 16?
Hillwood here, I'm seeing, I thought that we didn't, didn't we just do something there?
Thank you, mayor and council. Hillwood Drive, there is no sanitary sewer service for that neighborhood. We constructed utilities for the Barrington neighborhood and the rear of those lots previously.
So Hillwood is still not connected?
That's correct.
This be an opportunity.
Sanitary would still need to be extended up County Road 69, or, sorry, 79 to the north to get to this area. It's always an option, however, based on the city's special assessment policy, those sewer extensions would be 100% assessable to property owners. If the property owners haven't petitioned the city for that yet, the city hasn't taken the initiative to initiate that process. But certainly, if the council would direct staff to explore, that we could reach out to the neighborhood.
I would think if we're that close.
To the cost-benefit analysis of how their system is and everything else.
It's not part of this discussion tonight.
Right. Okay, so, other questions of staff? Okay, the question I had was, the dotted lines toward the back of the lots, is that an easement? You had the right map up.
There's some dotted lines here.
Mayor, which one are you talking about?
Can you put the other map that you just had up? There you go.
This one?
Nope.
Next one, that one.
That one. So if you look at the backside of these lots, where you've got the two dotted lines, what does... what does that?
That's our drainage and utility easement, Mayor and Council, that we have on all our lots.
Okay. It just looks wide.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
You know, one of the options for access, if it wasn't so developed on both sides, is they could actually come over to Barrington or go over to Hill Drive, Hillwood, but they already have houses there, so you can't make that connection. But this is a good example of what a standard operating procedure written down does, you know? The county looked at their current standard operating procedure and said, this is what our current policy is, we're not gonna deviate it from you, otherwise, why have the policy, and we'll just go on a case-by-case basis. Like it or not, that's what it is.
It goes.
All right. What's the, actions of council? Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-2025-TAG-003, a resolution approving the preliminary plat of Richland Court.
Seconded by Counselor Contreras?
Correct.
Discussion on the motion. Discussion? I know there was some concern with neighboring properties.
The amount.
I don't know if it was the amount, or whether they fit in, or whatever, but the bottom line is, is you've got a private piece of property here that's gonna develop it based on our zoning code, and it's within code, so you really don't have legitimate justification to deny.
Property owner rights.
So, got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. 10C, annexation, zoning, and Metropolitan Urban Service Area Amendment to multiple properties located within Jackson Township.
So Mayor, as you said, this is the annexation, zoning, and MUSA amendment for the properties within Jackson Township, so City Shakopee is proposing the annexation and zoning to agricultural preservation, an amendment of the Metropolitan Urban Service Area, also known as the MUSA. Properties in question are all located north of County State Aid Highway 78, with several east of Old Brickyard, County Road 69, and several others just east of US Highway 169. There are 11 parcels total, consisting of approximately 61 acres, with a potential development that generally consists of a mix of commercial, residential projects, and open space. These are all in areas A and B of the orderly annexation area that allows the city to annex up to 250 acres per year. City staff have provided a certified notice of intent to annex to the Weber, Brigeman, and Melcher properties as required in the approved OAA. Staff have met on-site with the Melcher family to share details of the proposed sanitary sewer project. Staff have had multiple discussions with some of the families to share details of what may occur with upcoming developments in the vicinity and impacts on the annexation into the city. Some of those details were included in the notice of intent to annex to the families. Proposed resolutions will extend the MUSA to the properties that can be developed, annexed properties into the city of Shakopee, abate city taxes to what is currently collected as Jackson Township taxes until the three properties are sold or transferred. Those are the owner-occupied homes that are located in the future open space in the 2040 comprehensive plan, and provides that when the future sanitary sewer is constructed through the current Melcher property and forest, that it will be bored under the forest through the bluff, so as not to disturb the existing forest. So this is a site area of the annexation parcels, so these are two Scott County parcels along 169. This is two properties. One was formerly actually connected to this property, which is since sold, and this is the old Scott Carver County Humane Society site, which was never developed. This is a vacant parcel that goes uphill into the bluff. This is the Melcher property, Weber, and Brigeman parcel. I did find out this afternoon that the Brigeman property did close, if you remember from our last discussion, there will be a new subdivision here developed with D.R. Horton, and there's a new commercial industrial subdivision down here, and then this will be the city's open space that will be acquired. So that closed today, so this parcel was created today, so the city's in the process of getting that appraised. So to give you an idea about the current city of Shakopee, it's the red color here, these are all properties within the city of Shakopee. The blue properties are the properties that we're discussing tonight for annexation. The MUSA properties, you'll see in a second, are the ones down by 169. So after this annexation tonight, this is what the city of Shakopee will look like, and we will be working with these property owners down here to annex this last section in. If you remember, we had a discussion two or three years ago with these property owners to hold off annexing this area until such time there were utilities, or they decide to sell for future development. So here's the comprehensive plan guiding. The area is highlighted way down here in red are the proposed MUSA changes, so that former property down here that was the Humane Society and the two Scott County parcels that are along the highway. This'll blow up of those parcels. And again, here is the orderly annexation map, so here's Area A. Per the map I showed you, we are doing orderly annexation here. This is the last area left in Area A. In Area B, we're finishing off taking in those areas with these three parcels, and we're gonna work on this last parcel in Area B. Current Scott County zoning is urban business reserve for most of this. This is the 2040 comprehensive guiding. The parcels that are currently residential and the parcel that's guided for mixed-density residential down here, this is the area that will end up being either bluff or open space. So the bluff does come down into this larger residential parcel, and then the blue area is the remainder of the bluff, as the green comes through here. So the three actions required tonight, approving resolution R-2025-035, approving the annexation of the property of Jackson Township, as was mentioned, that's been amended, approving resolution R-2025-34, a resolution approving the comprehensive plan amendment to figure 4.6, which is extending the MUSA, and three is adopting ordinance O-2025-008, approving the zoning of these properties to agricultural preserve. That's our holding zone, similar to the urban reserve zone that the county has.
Questions of staff?
Point out, was that boring? It was gonna go through the woods?
Yes. So if you look on this map, if you remember, this is getting developed right now, or will be developed shortly. There'll be a sewer line that will serve the areas to the south, so it's a fairly deep sewer, because it has to cross 78 and go down into the rest of Jackson Township, and then into Louisville Township. So if you remember, we have two sewer lines here. One is in the Zumbrow area. This is the other sewer line, so it will be bored basically right about here.
I'm just curious.
Any other questions of staff? Couple of questions. The Scott County sites, the two right on the, are them remnant 169 parcels, or...
Mayor and Council, yes. Those are parcels they must have acquired property when 169 was done, and they're leftover.
And I assume they're tax-exempt?
Currently, yes, Mayor, they are.
So there won't be no cost to the city?
Correct. As you remember, Mayor and Council, we pay seven years of the township taxes to the township when we annex property in, so on those two parcels, we will not be paying them the seven years.
And Scott Carver Humane Society, who owns that? Is that a joint?
That was, Mayor and Council, that was just acquired by a developer, so that will be taxable.
It was tax-exempt?
Yes.
All the concerns with the Weber, Melcher, and I guess Brigeman's gonna have just a little site remaining, correct? Right there?
Mayor and Council, there'll be, so this is the Melcher property, the long parcel right here, their house is here. The Weber property is right here, and this is the last piece of the Brigeman property. And then there's this road. One of the other things that we're doing this for as part of this project, if you remember, there's a stormwater basin up in here. The emergency overflow will work its way down through the open space and actually run down this road and to the ditch on County Road 69, so we'll need to take up that road and put that pipe in, so it'll become a city road, and the city will be responsible for its maintenance.
Is that road gravel today?
Mayor and Council, yes.
Will we be blacktopping that road?
I've had a discussion with the city engineer, and in order to maintain it, we'll be doing at least a temporary blacktop on it.
Okay.
You want the water to roll in?
Well, it's gonna be in a pipe under the road.
Oh, I see.
But still, if you're gonna plow it...
Since we're gonna be tearing it up to put the pipe in, in my discussions with the city engineer, we figured it'd be easier to then pave it.
And that begs the assessment question, I guess.
So, we would be absorbing that. We would not be assessing these people for, basically, it'll be a temporary road. Eventually, somewhere down the road, we're in the process right now, we have an appraisal for the large bluff piece and for these three properties. We'll have our agent working with these people to decide whether they wanna stay here long-term in a life estate, or they wanna sell, et cetera, so that road may not be used, you know, for that many years.
Right, just him.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of staff? Is any of the properties affected in the audience tonight that would like to speak? Are you an affected property owner?
Yes.
Up to the mic, please, and we can get your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Mayor and Council. My name is Paul Melcher. I'm the son of the owners who are not able to be here tonight.
Okay.
Tom and Sue Melcher.
Okay.
That's the 10-acre, approximately property with the woods. Just a couple of comments. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. Really appreciate Mr. Kurski and Mr. Jordan for their time coming out to the property, meeting with my parents, and my brother and sister and I. Our major concerns have been met, I think, by this resolution. Both my brother and I are biologists. Our family is very involved in maintaining the ecological character of that property, and my parents have lived there for about 60 years now. Our goal is to maintain that property and see it eventually probably become part of this Bluffland Park system, although that ultimately will be up to Tom and Sue. And so you can imagine that hearing that a sewer trunk liner was gonna bisect it was pretty scary. I think that the, what the engineering staff has come up with is acceptable to us at this point. We'd like to see it not go through the property at all, of course, but we're, you know, we're not naive to the needs of development around it, so just a note of appreciation on that, and thanks for the support.
Absolutely. And the city's intent is to have that bluff line, bluff area as a conservation area for long-term saving. That's been in the plans for many years.
Sounds like a milkier park to me.
Any questions for this property owner from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is any other property owners in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? And your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah. My name's Frank Weber. I own the property on the top left there, just that little bump up. I've got a question for Mike there. You said that when you tear up the road to put out that sewer pipe, or water, storm sewer pipe, you're gonna blacktop that. What's to keep from traffic once the development's done to the east of our property there from cars going up that road?
Mayor and Council, there's no connection. We actually changed the design of the subdivision, I think, back years ago, I think, before I actually came into the city, there was a plan to actually connect down through this area. This subdivision has actually houses over here and no connection, so there's no way for them to get there.
I think the answer to your question is, there probably most likely be a sign that either says dead end or no outlet.
There is already a sign that says no outlet, and there's probably, yeah, so Brigeman's, there's probably 20 cars a week that go up, do a turnaround, because they're looking for a shortcut over to the other side of Marystown Road. The only thing that's stopping them now is there's a gate across that farm road. That's the only thing that's stopping them from going that way.
So to your point, there's no, absolutely no connection to the new subdivision, there's houses that back up there, so you'd be driving into someone's backyard.
Okay.
If it makes you any, makes you feel any better, I can't get people to stop at the red lights in town either.
For that.
Thank you.
Yeah, one more.
Anybody else?
Did you wanna, did you wanna say a few words?
No, anybody?
Anybody else? Seeing none? Mr. Delaney?
Actually, question. Would it be possible to put a no outlet sign at the entrance, since they keep people, since they go into the end and then turn around, if you see the sign before you get over here?
Counselor Delaney, there already is a no outlet sign at that intersection, but we could look at improving the size of that sign or better location for visibility. Signs don't always stop people from driving in certain areas, but we can do our best to try to improve the signage out there.
Thank you.
Counselor Contreras?
If already, I have the first one.
And you have, we all have the new resolution on the table, so...
Yep.
All right, Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to approve resolution R-2025-035, a resolution approving the annexation of Jackson Township property.
I'll second.
Motion by Counselor Contreras, seconded by Counselor Lara. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Delaney?
Second one. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R-2025-034, a resolution approving the comprehensive plan amendment to figure 4.60, Metropolitan Urban Service Area, MUSA, in the 2040 comprehensive plan.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Counselor Contreras, seconds the motion. Is there a discussion on the motion? I'm gonna guess that figure 4.60 is the three red pieces on the map, the Scott County, Scott County, well, they're blue, Scott County, Scott County, and Scott Carver Humane.
Yeah, that's correct.
Any discussion on the motion? Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. One more to go. What's the wishes of the council?
I'll take it.
Mr. Whiting?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R-2025-TAG-008. Is there a, it doesn't show an R, is it O?
It's an ordinance.
Ordinance, O-2025-TAG-008, an ordinance approving the zoning these, zoning these properties as agricultural preservation ag zone.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Lara, seconds the motion. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay.
Welcome to Shakopee.
That concludes 10C. Thank you for your comments. We really appreciate you being here and your comments on this discussion item.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that staff was able to work with the property owners and address these concerns.
And thank you to the city attorney for working on Sunday and getting a fix.
Well, what's that gonna cost us? At what rate?
I don't even drive double time, either.
Thank you.
I thought your regular time was like triple already.
All right. Moving to item 10D, final plat of Highview Park 4th Edition. Mr. Kurski?
Mayor and Council, as you said, this is the final plat of Highview Park 4th Edition. Forestar USA Real Estate Group, owner and applicant, has proposed the final plat of Highview Park 4th Edition, located south of County State Aid Highway 78, east of Zumbrow Avenue, and west of Marystown Road. This is the fourth phase of the development, and consists of 115 single-family homes. Forestar is a partner with D.R. Horton, and the home starts have been strong on the Highview Park subdivision. Their proposal is consistent with the comp plan guiding and zoning density requirements. The developers proposing homes compliant with the design and performance standards of the R-1B zone, and the city, county, and developer have spent considerable time discussing sewer and rights-of-way design, and all issues have been addressed and are reflected in the latest plan set. the latest plan set. So here is the fourth edition, which, shall I get this to work? Come on. Well, it's the area, here we go. It says area outline in blue and this piece over here. You can see Highview Park has rapidly been growing down Zumbro. Some, remember when we started this, they figured this was a five to six-year project. I think that we're way ahead of that schedule. So the fourth edition is coming in. So here is the final plat with these three pieces. So there's different plan sets, but this is basically the connection here. There is a existing piece that's already been done through here. So approve resolution R 2025-005 approving the final plat of Highview Park Fourth Edition.
Questions of staff?
Just a comment. I noticed that park dedication fees are going to the Jackson Commons Park, so we want to make sure we note that. That's always good to improve that park for Jackson Commons Park. Nothing else.
And I will add that we had some comments from county commissioners of how wonderful that park is coming along.
That's awesome.
Any other questions for staff?
If we only had a winter, it would be much better shape.
Right, right.
You don't do so much.
We'd get sick and tired of the same old weather if we didn't have a change.
Right.
Any other questions of staff? My question is access. With the county spacing requirements, is that Marystown Road, no access to Marystown?
How do you access?
There's no access to Zumbro either? Or wait, let me go back and look at this plan here.
Yes, there is access to Zumbro.
Right here. Is this an access down here?
Oh, here, yeah.
It's right here.
Point out how you get to this development.
Mayor, you come through this main road right here down into this subdivision?
Okay.
And then there's roads here, so there's a road right here that goes into this portion of the subdivision.
But there won't be no access onto Marystown on either of these?
No.
Okay.
The applicant's here, he can answer any additional question.
Well, I was wondering what the spacing is from the other access points and does it fit into what's allowed? I can't really tell on this map.
It looks like there's access in Zumbro, too.
Yeah. It looks like there's a lot of accesses already on Marystown. There's one right here, there's one right there. And if there's a fifth addition...
Which you'll see next.
Right.
Coming next, yeah. But that's over here.
I guess the only, the best answer I'm looking for is Scott County will want to allow an access, is that correct?
Mayor and council, that is correct. If you look on the map that Ms. Kurski has up, there is a road that already connects Marystown Road on the east side. It's just on, just below that blue line for Highview Park Fourth Edition. That parcel that's south of there on the west side is outside of the Highview Park subdivision, so the developer does not have control over that. It's not part of the subdivision, so there would be an access at that location in the future as the streets from Highview Park Fourth Edition get extended to the south. That would provide additional access to Marystown Road. That access would be restricted in the future. The full access is shown just on the bottom of the screen. It's Priville Pond Lane. That's the ultimate full access to Marystown Road. That would be built in conjunction with the property to the south, which is the Olafland parcel at the time that is subdivided and developed. But there are multiple locations for access proposed to Zumbro Avenue, a second access proposed with this subdivision as well to provide a looped system throughout the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. What's the wishes of the council? Mr. Lara?
Resolution R 2025-005 approving the final plat of Highview Park Edition Four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is one arm wrestle for the second or? Counselor Contreras, seconds to motion? Discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion?
Nope.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 10 E, final plat of Highview Park Fifth Edition.
Also, this is the final plat of Highview Park Fifth Edition, so we are moving quickly through the subdivision. Again, Four Star Real Estate is the property owner in cooperation with D.R. Horton. Fifth phase of development consists of 73 single-family homes. Developers proposing homes compliant with the design and performance standards of R1B zoning. There will be additional future phases of the fifth edition in the outlot areas. So here is the fifth edition over here in the site aerial. So give you a frame of reference, this is the Scott County Tower arrangement right down here, and you just did the fourth edition, which is this area right over here. So this is across Zumbro on the west side. So here is the final plat. So this will be an outlot up here for later development. So action sought to approve resolution R 2025-36 approving the final plat of Highview Park Fifth Edition.
Questions of staff? Mr. Lara?
Hey, Mr. Kurski, it's been a while since we reviewed this, and I remember when this first came through that this was going to be a very deep to the south development. How far south are we going exactly? When does it stop?
So hang on. So D.R. Horton's property and Mr. Sewell's here from D.R. Horton, I believe they have this piece and this piece. So they do own this piece right down here. They have not come in for any plans yet for that. As the city engineer mentioned, they do not own this parcel right here. The Olafland parcel is currently for sale, and I believe they have an offer on it. We'll probably annex this in because we don't want to leave an island at some point soon. This parcel is a single-family home and they are not currently involved in any of these discussions. Just past here is Louisville Township and the families that own the first group of properties in that township have already met with the city and are negotiating with a number of developers right now. So to your point is, we will keep going south.
The township line is where?
Just the other side of the Olafland property.
282?
Pardon me?
282, or is that too far?
I think that's too far.
Mr. Whiting?
Without an orderly annexation agreement with Louisville Township, can parcels be added in if they request to and as they're developed?
Mayor and council, that's correct. State law allows for any property owner that's adjacent to city without an orderly annexation agreement can request to be annexed into the city without any payment or approval from the township.
If we did have an orderly annexation agreement with Louisville Township, the township would actually receive some, as part of our agreement, much like we did with Jackson, would actually receive some tax dollars from the city for a period of time. But since there's no agreement, Louisville Township will get nothing.
And mayor and council, that's why the other big thing that the city engineers worked on is bringing that sewer line as part of this project down to this area, and there will be a lift station either on the Olafland or the sand property. The sand property is the property that's in Louisville Township. But we have, this whole area was designed as part of, if you remember, the AUAR, there was a master sewer plan done to serve Louisville Township.
Right.
And we will be updating that AUAR because we're, I believe it or not, we're near five, and so by the end of this year, the state requires us to update that.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Delaney?
Does SMSC own any property further down that buts up against that?
Mayor and council, I was actually texting with senior planner Kyle Saboda. He's working on a map that will show all of the SMSC properties in Louisville Township. They have acquired a significant amount of property in Louisville Township.
Thank you.
Well, and Scott County, too, for that matter. Counselor Contreras?
All right. I will make a motion to approve resolution R 2025-036 approving the final plat for Highview Park Fifth Edition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Delaney. Any discussion on the motion? Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, mayor and council.
We don't have reports, liaison reports. Did we start last time? I think we started over here, didn't we?
I wasn't here last time, but we can. Get my by-the-numbers up here. Couple of things for Shakopee Public Utilities, and I thought I put that up here. One was, we had residents that were concerned about the solar access charge, the cap on that. We did adjust that down to 40. Existing residents will be half of that, and then following year it'll jump to 40 as far as the max. But I was looking for my numbers of this to give you kind of by-the-numbers for the utilities. Utilities, it looks like the city has great staff. Utilities also has great staff, and they work really hard, just like our city staff does, to make sure our 20,000-plus electric users have limited number of outages. And I can't find right here in my packet, but they were basically top in the region, top of the various other providers, and also they beat Excel as far as time out, time for outages is, I think it's around 30 minutes on average.
They're the best or they had the most?
They were the best as far as the lower amount of outages. Typically, about half the outages are usually due to wildlife, storm, or tree. Everything else is kind of added up there, but again, I can't find the numbers here from my SPUC package, we'll pull that up. But overall, they do provide great services for the city, and just like we're blessed to have the city staff over here, we're blessed to have the staff that we have at SPUC. As far as 169 Coalition, nothing there. We do have everything, everything transportation next week. There was a legislative meeting Monday, kind of a conference down at the Capitol on Monday. Then Wednesday, there was a groundbreaking for Jordan for 282, 69, and 9, I believe, that's going in, so that'll be pretty exciting to attend to.
282, 169.
282, 169, and 9.
And 9, yeah.
And that's it, thank you.
Mr. Whiting?
Well, I got to say that we don't have the wildlife squirrel report as much as we used to since they coded the telephone polls, so we, that's all good for squirrels. We, on Monday, did the Suburban Transit Association Board meeting. We talked about our legislative agenda and again, talking about consistence and consistency in funding, trying to get there.
And we had your MBTA presentation tonight.
Yep. I hope you all enjoyed that. We're active in Shakopee, but as they mentioned, we can't grow that base because we're stuck at those early numbers when we first adopted, even though our community is growing.
So what do we do about that?
Yeah, I'm not sure. We'll have to talk to, I'm not sure how that works.
Order up some green paint, start printing that money.
Yep.
All right. Counselor Contreras?
I was ill on Friday, so I could not make my scale meeting, so I don't have a report for you this week.
Okay. Mr. Lara?
Previously, you'd mentioned, you'd asked about the school board and I think with, in terms of like budgeting or finance?
Yeah, they just put that out today. Got an email today on that.
Okay. I just had a brief discussion with the president of the school board, and at that time, he, high level, there was no immediate concern, but I'm sure things will progress and change. Other than that, I have no other updates.
Very good. Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing for me, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. Staff and I met with Scott County, two commissioners and their staff, basic stuff, people not following traffic laws. What else did we talk about? What's developments happening? Just reminiscing. Nothing earth-shattering to report from that, so that's the extent of my report. City bill list. Any questions on the bill list?
No questions for me.
Other business, I just wanted to do a mention of Shakopee Cleanup Day is Saturday, 26th, 7:30 to, is it 11 or 11:30? 11:30 at Public Works off Fourth Avenue, get in line early. If you're unlucky, you might see me there, and if you're lucky, you might see the other council members there. Anybody else have anything else to give to the community? Kelsey, you got anything?
Public service announcements.
So on Friday, April 25th, we will be doing a event and sale at the community center. It'll be 25% off all season passes and punch cards for Sand Ventures grand, re-grand opening in 2025, and we will also be having a Pirate Fun Day. The community center will be free that day from 9:00 a.m. till 2:00 p.m. We have arts, crafts, storytime with our favorite pirate, and a pirate-themed open swim that day, so it should be a lot of fun.
Very good.
Who's the favorite pirate?
You ought to come to find out.
Any other, any other?
I will only say that I
It's R, R, R.
I've heard that the pirate will have treasure to hand out as well.
All right, there you go.
Come get your gold while you can.
Any other public service announcements from anybody on staff?
That was amazing, the egg hunt this weekend. Just wanted to say great job on the Easter egg hunt this weekend. It was amazing. I mean, I didn't get a chance, but I heard and saw the pictures. Amazing turnout, I'll say that. I did drive by and the fields were full of eggs. I was like, I want to go, and I'm like, never mind, I can't do that anymore. Yeah.
Very good. Any other business? Item number 14.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to May 6th, 2025 at 7:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? In favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.
Yay.
Thank you.